All right, looks like we're ready to roll.
We're good.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Parkston Independence District Library Board and Trustees Meeting for September 12th. We are calling the meeting to order at 6:36. Let's rise for the Fedenlegis.
The Fedenlegis, to the pride of the United States of America and the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full call, please.
Kim, Kathy, Ebsen, Dan Green, Ebsen, Alison, Ben, Keith, Kim.
Here.
May I have a new?
Here.
Mayor Mafala?
Here.
Kim, Dan, Sam, Michelle?
Ah, sure.
You're there, Kim.
I'll accept your motion for approval of the agenda.
So will I.
I'll second.
You got everybody? It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Call to the public.
Hi, I'm part of the public.
Yep.
You may.
Well, our big fall book sale is starting on the 27th. That will be the preview for Friends from six to eight here. And then the book sale itself for the public starts September 28th and runs through 23rd.
The book sale is the 21st on January 4th. It's okay, I just wanted to catch that.
It's been a good day.
It would be more important for me.
I'll read this from her report. Okay. The Friends preview will be the 20th. And then the book sale will be the 21st through the 24th. And I might add that we're going to really, really appreciate the new tables. It'll be a lot more, it's a lot easier to use better tables. And then there was a subcommittee that did some planning and they have set up a new format or floor plan. So if you remember, usually the children are back here sort of squished in this corner. They are going to be moved over here to have more space and not be sort of getting into the other room. So we're looking forward to this and hoping we make a lot of money.
Now, keep all of our paper under wraps.
I have one quick question for you. I went to volunteer, you know, there's the link to volunteer for the book sale? And it said the site was down, so I thought I'd draw it to your attention. For the front side. I don't know, when I went to the, you know, on the Friends page where you click down and it says volunteer? So I went to volunteer and it said the site is down.
Okay, if you were trying to get to it from the website, I bet that link is not updated.
Yeah, so I thought I'd mention it because it seemed like it was wrong.
Those last, those last minute. The worst war.
Well, because they were looking for volunteers for the sale they were.
And here we were, willing.
Yeah.
Couldn't get on the site.
Did you try to?
Yes.
Of course.
It's an I that didn't get dotted.
Thanks, Kim.
I am G D S, so please mark.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
I will. I have a question. Okay, would you like to use the microphone? Can anybody hear me? This is gonna be good. I've been, haven't missed an election in my life and I have voted against the board for the library taxation this time for the first time. Because of the last paragraph in the agenda that was, or the millage that was proposed, can someone explain to me why there is an attachment for a road tax at the end of a library millage?
It is something that was put on by the township. It is a brownfield tax capture. It is designed to do an environmental cleanup on one property, which is the property at the corner of Dixie Highway and M15. The library board does not have the authority to opt out of that environmental cleanup. That is something that is done at the township level. It, on that particular property, there was a gas station. And in order to revitalize that property, they had to clean out the gas tanks that were leaking from underneath it.
For $460.
So, no, the county does that. They, they clean it up and then they shave a tiny bit of taxes out of the taxes on that particular property. Not everybody's taxes, just the taxes on that property for the next however many years it takes to repay that cleanup. But by law, we have to put it into the ballot language because there is a portion of library millage money that is being used for a purpose other than library purposes. So even though it's just $650 a year from the library millage, to clean up that property, it is being used for non-library purpose.
I don't understand why they would tax or take a portion of the money for the library to clean up something that was built 100 years ago. I don't get that.
They, well, it's.
This doesn't help me.
It comes from all of the millages and unfortunately, it's not something that I have any control over. It's something that is done.
Who does?
The township made a deal with the county to clean up that property. And it is on all of the millages that are in the township.
Can you tell I'm new up here?
I hope I've answered your question. I don't know how else I can help.
Well, it's.
It is the way that the public finds.
It cost you a vote. As a matter of fact, it cost you six. I had my daughter, my son-in-law, my two granddaughters who were old enough to vote, my wife and myself. I would have that. My years in business, I would step up and find out who did that and have it changed.
It's not something that I'm able to change. I appreciate what you're saying.
You might not, but you have a boss and he has a boss and up you go.
Well, it's a, it's a thing that's done at a governmental level. I don't have the ability to change it, I'm sorry.
No, I understand that you don't. But someone has the ability to change that.
It's at, it's at a governmental level and it is, it is a mechanism put in place that allows for municipalities to clean up environmental problems.
On every millage?
On every millage in the township.
School millages?
On every, it's my understanding, well, schools I'm not sure about, but I know it's on all of the other millages. I'm not sure if schools are exempt from that one or not. Library, fire, police, parks, all of that are part of that, yeah.
And will it end?
It will end when the amount of money that was needed to clean up is reimbursed to the county. So it does end eventually.
Who will that property do though? And I don't want to belabor this, it's just.
I do not.
It's needed, oh. But I stirred on this since the election.
Well, the people to talk to would be the people at the township because it is a tax capture that is through the assessors.
And the person at the township would be?
Kim, who is the assessor, should be able to answer your questions about it.
Kim?
Kim, K-I-M, Kimberly.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
I'm sorry that it was confusing to you.
It is confusing.
It's not confusing. It's misdirecting funds.
Well, that is the requirement, so several years ago, these sorts of tax captures have been in place for, since the seventies. Back in early 2000s, 2002, 2004. There was a legislator on the west side of the state who worked very hard on a millage renewal for a senior center. And was very upset when he found out that there was a tax capture that was affecting that millage after they had cast. And so he worked to put legislation in place that requires by law that when there is a tax capture on a millage, that it needs to be in the ballot language so that the public knows that there are some funds being diverted. Now, in this case, it's a small amount of funds, only $650 per year, but it is a diversion. And so the legislation was put in place so that you would be able to find out about it instead of inadvertently being left in the dark about that.
I appreciate things being in black and white, but it's not. Speaking as Joe Public.
Well, unfortunately, I, the library does not have the ability to control that. It is something that is put in place and we are simply informed that it will be a capture on our millage. We did follow the letter of the law by making sure that it was in the ballot language so you knew about it.
We wouldn't want you to do anything else.
Well.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, I've got my ammunition. If I leave, it's, don't take offense.
That's okay, I'm sorry. Very good. We understand. Are there any other public comments tonight?
Just one?
Yes.
Real brief, I just wanted to let you know that this will be the last night that I am hosting the tech for the board meetings because I am retiring from the part-time IT position here. Effective next week, so just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And basically, my main initiative behind that was to spend time, more time with my beautiful daughter and family, so. But I have been a patron here since August of 2015 and I intend to do so following the end of my tenure here, so I appreciate and I'm very thankful for the amazing opportunity that I've had to serve both this library and the public at large for the past nearly four years. So that's all I have to say about that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm sure your family would be busy.
Yes.
Now that we're all listening.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Would you like me to present the millage rate?
Yes, I would like now at this point to present the millage rate for the public hearing.
Can you all hear me okay or do I need the microphone tonight?
I speak up. I think we can hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
But did you want to say what time? Because it's got a place for the time recorder.
Oh, we don't have minutes, but I thought you did.
She asked me. She was gonna give us some info first.
Okay, yes, we'll give you info and then we'll. Okay, so the thing that you need to know about the millage rate is that it is, originally it was 1.25 mils approved in 2014. Headley has rolled it back to 1.1687. We did a millage renewal on the ballot August 2nd. It was approved 68% yes votes. It is an eight-year millage renewal and it goes through 2029 inclusive. Because it was just renewed, it is not subject to being rolled down by Headley this year. It is just renewed at the rate that it is, so 1.1687 is the amount for the millage. Any questions about that? Okay, fine, very good. Don't go too far. Okay.
At this point, I will open the public hearing at 6:50 on the millage rate. So we are not asking to put the millage rate back up to 1.25. We are accepting the roll down. That was what was on the ballot, that was what was approved. So that is the millage that will be in place for the next eight years. Well, subject to the roll down starting next year.
It'll be 1.1687 to go on to the tax bill on December 22nd.
Yes.
Questions from the public on that? No?
Okay. Then we will close the hearing at 6:51. And. Let's talk about the public hearing for the budget.
Okay, so let's talk about the budget. Okay, so in terms of the library budget, you have your, the budget information you can get is posted on the library's website. So let's review what we did in 2022. We did remodel the community meeting room. We remodeled the team lounge and that included added features using donor funds. We added Debbie's book note to the area in memory of Debbie, Deborah Walker. She, her family entirely funded that to do it for them. Additional outreach programming such as partying park and print retreat incorporating local businesses. We did hire a full-time school outreach coordinator to increase collaboration with schools. We added online youth historic walking tour to the Parkston Historic District website to support the school's local history curriculum. We added that tour that the second graders do every year. We added that special walking tour to the website to coincide with what they do and make that easier for them. That was a really nice collaboration. We expanded the major program offerings including our 3D printer, cameo silhouette and glow torch. We also entirely from donor funds added a seed library, which is a unique option for people who live to garden. We had, we had to start our own seed collection, people who come in and gather seeds from our seed collection and plant it in their yard and then we ask them to save seeds, donate that to the library so we could sort of bring a seed cake seed to the program. So we added that to our collection. We hired a full-time innovations librarian to expand our focus on creative services. During the pandemic, we did a lot of creative services trying to manage with various COVID and pandemic restrictions. So we were able to be very, very creative and innovative in that way and we wanted to keep that goal in innovation in the mission statement. So we wanted to make sure we did that through a librarian and be specifically focusing on innovation and through the sorts of public programs. We transitioned to a new alarm monitoring system in preparation for replacing the fire alarm system. Now, that doesn't always sound like anything very important, but the building was built in 1992 and the alarm system was up to ADA code in 1992. But a lot has changed since then. So we do need to replace that system. The first step in that process was to switch to a new alarm monitoring company or service to redo that first and then coming year, we will be redoing all of that. All of the overheads on alarm, as you can imagine, in the building, full of paper, really important for the fire safe and the fire inspector spends a lot of time investigating that, so. We also transitioned our community relations volunteer board into a marketing community with an important addition. So the guiding principles for our budget. Address continued growth in library usage both internally and remotely. Focus on fiscal management, responsible spending and proper care of community assets, including the library's collection, the services that we offer. Improve services for our community. Make data-inspired decisions using hard data interface with community feedback and input to provide residents with the services they truly need and want. And be mindful of the current competitive job market and prioritize with community employees. So in terms of revenue, as I said, the district wide voted library mils of 1.25 mils rolled back to 1.17 by Headley. It was renewed at 1.1687 by voters on August 2nd for eight years. Day date increased slightly in 2022, so you'll see in terms of revenue. I'm keeping that number about where it was and the reason that I'm doing that is because that is a really unpredictable number. In terms of, day date comes in two pieces. The state provides a check, sort of in the spring and another one in the summer. If there are any budget issues among, at the state level, if there's going to be a reason or an amount to not get the state roll, we hold that second check, which means we would get half of the state day that we normally would be expecting. So I usually try to budget it about capital or expecting to assure that if something happens and we don't get that second check, we're not cutting services mid-year. If we do get that check, then we can plug that money, work and plug that money into various projects or services, both instead of the diaper, like things like the fire alarm system that ended up being pricey and needing to come in for. Okay, penal fines, penal fines is another one. It did decrease slightly in 2022. Penal fines are funds that are in the constitution of Michigan. The libraries get a small piece of the fees and core costs for traffic tickets. So if you give speeding tickets, you are making a small donation to your library to keep you reading. But obviously, that amount of money as calculated out per capita is a little unpredictable because we don't always know how much that's going to be. So sometimes, in my tenure as library director for the last 16 years, it has been as low as $40,000, it has been as high as $72,000. We don't always know what it's going to be the last year, it's been holding sort of around $60,000. So I usually budget a little bit lower than the year before to keep you here for that. Library fee and duplicating, you're taking that should increase a little bit. A lot of the library fees that we see are for rental and things like that. Obviously, none of that happened during COVID and we're seeing the rent get rented a lot as groups are reconnecting and gathering again.
Excuse me, but can we back up to the penal fines?
Penal fines, sure. What can I answer?
Are those the tickets that are issued in Independence in Parkston or statewide?
Oakland County. It goes county by county. Penal fines are county by county. And it is divided.
Thank my son-in-law.
What's that?
Thank my son-in-law.
Okay, alright, well, you can tell them that it, that it does go to this good cause. It goes to many good causes, I'm sure, but this is not a good one.
He's got a fleet of very fast cars.
Okay. Okay, adjusted interest estimate is based on performance and I kept it about the same issue. Any questions about revenues? Nope, okay, moving on. Employment cost assumptions. So staffing usually accounts for 50 to 65% of a library's budget. Staffing accounted for 60% of the operating budget last year and has been maintained at that percentage for 2023. The job market continues to be competitive as recommended by the library board, staffing committee, wage adjustments have been included to help retain good employees, it's been competitive with similarly sized libraries in Southeastern Michigan. So how do we do that? We use BSLRT data, Detroit Suburban Library Amount People Data. That is a survey of information that is collected annually. We collect the information in November, it's reported back to the libraries in December. It includes all of the libraries in Southeastern Michigan, all class sizes 1 through 6. We are a class five. When we analyze this data, the staffing committee and I tease out just the class five libraries, libraries that are of our size with similar budgets. So what does that mean, class size? So class size is the service population. So class five libraries are 25,000 to 50,000 residents. And so we pull out all of the libraries that are in that range and then we look at it because of course, not all library budgets are created equal. In that class five library also is the Baldwin Public Library, which is Birmingham and their budget is significantly different, so we don't compare directly to them. We compare to libraries of similarly sized budgets like Celine and Orning Township, which have similar site populations and similar site values. Okay, healthcare costs actually have decreased due to changes in staffing, which is not something you hear me say every year. Okay, so wages amendments. We're holding it relatively stable across, you can see that I do have, in terms of the amount for full-time and part-time, those numbers have gone up. Part of it is because in 2022, just like everybody else, we all suffer a great resignation. We were staffed below our normal levels through most of 2021 and through a large portion of 2020. So those numbers are lower. So we are back up to full staffing, we have our full-time staff backed up, although I think we are in the process of preparing the team, my brilliant assistant. But that's why those numbers are what they are. So as I said, you'll see health insurance numbers, like it has gone down a lot. Why did it happen? It is a change in exactly how many of the staff we have. So we have an horrible care aggravated healthcare program and it is age-related. And so when our staff turns over, depending on how many dependents and how many, how old the staff is, those numbers change significantly and so that, that change was based on the number of staff that we have.
How many employees are there?
Forty-four. So we have 13 full-time and the rest are part-time.
Thank you.
Currently, right now, I'm down one full timer who is about to leave, so we are in the process of replacing him.
Thank you.
Any questions about that? So this is our organizational chart. Just will go into a little more depth. This is actually our 2022 organizational chart. We are not asking for any changes to the organizational chart this year. It's the same organizational chart this whole year. Any questions? Okay, so operating costs. Usually when I, the budget that you're looking at, I usually start at the bottom where I have the revenues, go off to the top, we talked about the staffing. This is everything in the middle. This is all of the processes, all of what it takes to run the building, keep the steam building, to develop the collections and expand the collections and important things. So where are we seeing some changes in this? We're getting pretty tight to where we were previously. I took a lot of my guidance on what we're doing for this year to 2019, which is in.
The last one.
I would say 2020, but in 2020, we did a lot of remending of the budget to deal with COVID and whatever. So we look back at 2019, which was the last sort of normal budget year that we had. You're going to see an increase in subscriptions. Subscriptions include electronic subscriptions and print subscriptions. Building is becoming more expensive. We actually have seen some subscriptions disappear as magazines or certain magazines are no longer being published, but we are increasing more of our online subscriptions. And we did allow that during COVID because that allows people to access resources and more frequently putting money to the bank. You'll see a slight increase in operating supplies due to some expected increases in costs. We, I did put an increase in for audit fees. We are doing an RFP for the audit this year. I'm anticipating that within the contract, we're going to see a little bit higher price because of course, our last audit contract was three years. And they are also seeing increased costs with their auditors and staff, so I'm assuming that's probably going to go up. There's an increase in professional contracting services. It includes the addition of a strategic planning process this year, which we were supposed to do in 2020 and then of course, with COVID, we set that aside in the end of the time to manage services differently. There's an increase in special events. It reflects the return to in-person programming. This amount is more in line with what was budgeted in 2019 prior to pandemic virtual programming. Virtual programming was less expensive. We did a lot of interesting and dynamic things during that time, but people are back to the point where they don't really want to do Zoom programming anymore, they really want to be in person and that is what we want somebody to be doing, so. The increase in equipment maintenance includes the project update, update the library's website, which we've been talking about for five years, but it's time to move it with that. And then the building budget does include the anticipated project to update the alarm system. Other building projects in the works include a full building generator, we're placing in a larger HDAC unit, the updated lighting, this community meeting room. And these projects will be funded through the capital improvement fund that's outside in the fund balance specifically with the software. Any questions on that? Nope? No? So this is the whole picture. That bottom piece that I was talking about, that's the revenue, that's the first piece I showed you. That top piece up there is the staffing, wages and staffing, and then the president of the little operators over there. So we're reviewing the big projects on the horizon. So as I mentioned, we're going to be doing a strategic plan this year and we're really excited about that. We will be focusing on engagement with the community as library users returns to pre-COVID levels. New technology in lighting, the community meeting room, installation of a mobility generator, replacement of the main HDAC unit on the roof. So you'll remember from the capital improvement plan, we have a complete list of everything in the building. Many things in the building are still 1992, some things are, have been changed over the course of time. The HDAC was done completely in 2006. There is a 15 to 20-year lifespan, life expectancy on those units. The unit that we're talking about, we're placing, we don't want necessarily to place all the units at the same time. We have one big unit that does the main part of the building, which is in your package, you'll see right time I'll go down a little bit more later. And then there's four smaller units. So in terms of those units, the big unit does the most work. It takes the most of the weight of keeping this building at the appropriate temperature, both in summer and in winter. It's very problematic when it goes down because the other four units can't make up force. They would like to, they would try to, but they can't. So in the interest of making sure that that unit doesn't just go out on us, we're talking about the replacement of that unit later this evening. This is money that we have set aside in our capital improvement plan in order to be able to do this, so this is not a big deal. It's not necessarily going to be a big deal. It's not necessarily going to take us operating every year from operating, but we have the money aside so that we are prepared to make these, make these, or change them. And then the replacement of the outdated furniture building system. All of this has been worked on at the time. Any other questions? All right, the final comments. Community engagement and collaboration has been renewed as our top priorities for the Library Board and staff as libraries' returns to pre-candemic levels. Providing a library with services that their community needs continues to be at the forefront of our decision-making. It was our intention to do strategic planning in twenty twenty, but a worldwide pandemic would derail that plan and teach us unexpected strategies for serving our residents and innovative ways. Now we look forward to getting back to that strategic planning process with a better understanding and our ability to listen, innovate, and pivot with like our community's wants and needs. Our main focus will always be providing a library that makes our residents proud and is proud of the reason they live here. Any questions about that? Can I come back to you? Okay. State vote while you open the public hearing.
Yes.
So, the public hearing on the budget as presented is now open at seven oh eight.
Would you like to say anything, Ellen?
Joe. What is the total budget for twenty-two, twenty-three?
He's on one of those, but I didn't get a chance to read it. My eyes are old.
Sorry, Joe, it's a little, it's two thousand four oh eight, one two five. Two million, sorry, two million four oh eight, one two five, sorry.
Thank you.
By the way, Joe, these are on our library website. Awesome.
If I had a computer.
We do in the library.
I can copy with that right here.
But thank you.
In that case, we will post the public hearing at seven oh nine. At this time, I will accept the motion to approve the consent agenda. So, how second? It's been moved in second to accept the consent agenda, including seven items are enabled items of particular interest. Okay? Okay? In that case, I will accept the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. All of the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion is accepted. And library statistics were presented in our budget workshop meeting, which was held, also opening a public meeting without cameras, where we worked through all of those items that you just saw. Listen. Now for the library director's report.
If this is the time of year that we normally send out an RFP for snowplowing for the coming season, for last year's RFP process, the vendor would award the contract offer to maintain the same pricing for a two-year contract. In light of this, we will forego the RFP process for snowplowing this season and continue with our current lender for the two years. Next item, the youth department has planned a fall festival event for Thursday, September twenty-second, from four to seven P.M. This will be a family program with a variety of outdoor games and activities. Thursdays are often a slower day at the library, but we are excited to have over three hundred people registered to attend this event. The Friends Book Sale will also be going on that week, and Thursday is usually the slowest day of the book sale, so we are hopeful that people who are at this event will also attend. September's library card signup month. As we do each time, this time each year, we are focusing our energy on getting students sign up for library cards through our CAP-CAS program. The forms have been submitted to the schools and are also available online. This is a collaborative program in Springfield Township Library, but the goal of making library services available to support all of our community students. And the reason that we collaborate with Springfield is that Springfield Township Library and the Republican Independence District Library are both included in the school district. It goes, the school district includes Andersonville Elementary and Springfield playing professor vice Springfield Township. So we collaborate with the other libraries to make sure that we are giving everybody the opportunity to create that library card. The story walk on the south side of library's parking lot that creates a path between the library and the school administration office was a collaborative project with Parkston Community Schools. Over the summer, we started to receive requests from families visiting the story walk to make the path more accessible to strollers. We've been investigating options by talking to Oakland County Parks for ways that they have been making their trails more accessible, such as the finely crushed limestone recently installed in Orin Oaks. This project is in its early stages, but we are excited to see what is possible to improve this popular feature on the library grounds. In addition, we have been communicating with the Blue Carin Land Conservancy about the possibility of installing a monarch way station on the library grounds. This would be a garden of native plants, such as milkweed and butterfly weed, that are crucial resources for monarch butterflies. We would like to consider adding this feature near the story walk and enhancing it with interpretive signage to educate people about the life cycle of this amazing creature that needs our assistance to survive and thrive. And in order to do this project, we will be looking for donors to help us with that. In terms of collaborations, once again, the library will have a booth at Artton Village. Thanks to Friends sponsorship, we will be offering free hand-on kids crafts and activities. Artton Village is in equal part on Saturdays, September seventeenth and Sundays, September eighteenth. And then Laura already mentioned this, but I will mention again, the Friends Fall wholesale will take place September twenty-first through twenty-fourth with the Friends member preview night, taking place from six to eight P.M. on Tuesdays, September twentieth. Setup for the sale will begin Friday, September sixteenth, for anyone who would like to volunteer to assist with that event. And Tim and I will make sure that that is updated and on the level set. Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Those of us who are tired will appreciate that. Yes.
All right, now to the nitty-gritty, regular business. Review and approval of the twenty twenty-three budget.
Okay. So I did do my basic presentation there. You will see that in your packet, not only do you have the narrative and the budget, as well as that L forty twenty-nine that I showed in terms of the military rates, you have the organizational chart. You also have the wage ranges, which I, as I said, we used the DSLRT survey in order to look at those. The ranges are actually in pretty good shape this year. There are only a couple of ranges that we wanted to nudge based on the data that we found. Head of circulation and facilities coordinator positions were both at forty-five to sixty thousand. Based on the DSLRT data, some were resized and budgeted libraries, forty-six to sixty-two is probably more in line. We are also seeing for marketing and community engagement coordinator, we saw the upper end of that bump up a little bit as well. That is a very competitive job at this point. And then cataloging technician, that one has been holding steady for a very long time, and I was surprised to see that it had gone up somewhat. That's not necessarily a bad thing in terms of the people that are in that position, so thirty-five to forty-seven would be my proposed increase or change to the wage range, given that data. For part-time, part-time is actually also in pretty good shape. We did see a bump up in the data in terms of part-time custodial staff. That's another one of those competitive jobs where other businesses are possibly paying more, and because dating a library is no different than dating a business, we need to stay in the competitive range for that. And then our part-time page, that range has been ten to twelve. We are hearing rumblings that the minimum wage may increase potentially to twelve dollars an hour. Our pages start at ten. We do have a couple of pages that may, eleven have been working here for many, many years. I would recommend bumping the range up to thirteen in case that minimum wage does bump up so that I can appropriately correct those employees, take them up to minimum wage, and those couple of employees who have been with us for many, many years, increase them up enough so that they are still making more than maybe that was started in the fall, so. Any questions about any of that? No? All right, so I have given you the salary ranges and wage ranges proposed for all of the positions. That is in your packet. I do have two positions that we made some changes to their responsibilities, and so we want to, this is, this would be something that would normally take place in January, but I have two positions that I would recommend that we do that in September instead of January. They would then not see that increase, any increase in January. It would just be that their increase would come a little bit early in thanks for their additional efforts in recent months. Any questions about any of that? All right, so the capital improvement plan. We went over this at length in your workshop, so I won't make you listen to me talk about it all again, but this is still the draft version. I'm really excited that Arlene, who is our facilities coordinator, and Nicole, who is one of our administrative assistants, is working on having a capital improvement plan and also a maintenance spreadsheet, so that not everything that is small will end up on this bigger plan. This bigger plan is designed to include all of that, the meaty stuff, everything that's the building, the HDAC, it's all on here, the parking lot, it's all on here. It has the expected life, the gear that was most recently installed or replaced, the current age, and the priority of replacement. We're still working on some other priorities of replacement, updating, but essentially the spreadsheet is really nicely done while we change the year. The top, the spreadsheet, it goes through and changes all of those numbers for us so we can see how old everything is. The biggest concern right now, our priority one, is that big HDAC unit on the roof, for sure. Those are getting harder to guess, and we are concerned that may, if it were to go down this winter, it'd have a lead time of up to twenty-two to twenty-eight weeks.
That'd be nice if it happened before winter.
Yes. Yes. Well, I'd do the best. Any questions about the capital improvement plan? Okay. So next year, you will be seeing a capital improvement plan. There's some little things on here that you won't be seeing. I don't know that you're necessarily going to want the maintenance plan since this is smaller stuff, but if you would like to see that, obviously, I would be willing to. As required at the state level, we do have a technology, a three-year technology plan. So the first thing you have in your packet is the technology inventory and then the technology plan as well. The items that are, that Bill Baumner, our IT manager, is looking to do this year, so what we do essentially do is, in a three-year plan, we do a third of the computers each year so that nothing in the building is more than three years old. Some things we're actually able to replace using COVID care act money, so we're actually in better shape than before, if we were able to get some of that money to do some of that. So we have eight computers that we would like to replace this year, and also a server is due to be replaced, and that's a big ticket item of twenty thousand dollars. Servers, usually we get a longer lifespan out of those, so we, so for the main server that sort of holds up all of the technology in the building, we replace that every three years, but then what we do is take the old server and use it to replace out one of the two servers that is the lesser. We have what we call a train server. The train server is where we upload anything that would be, I'm taking, correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, but anything that would be sort of testing. So that's where we put Polaris, which is our ILS. When we make upgrades to it, people can go in and play with it before we actually change the real one that we use every day, so that we can make sure there aren't glitches in it first.
Not wanting glitches in the main.
No, you don't want any glitches in the main system. But anyway, usually what he does is when he switches out that main server every three years, your physical one and the other server's a test. So. All right, that's what I've got for you tonight in terms of budgets.
Okay. Everybody's mind appropriately. Thank you. This is why you spend that three hours at the workshop. At this time, I will accept and review and approval of the budget. Second? Is that what you said? Pardon? I didn't hear what you said. Oh, I'm sorry. At this time, I will accept the motion for review and approval for the approval of the twenty twenty-three budget. So setting the millage rate.
So the first one is?
First one is setting the millage rate.
Yeah, there's three different motions here that we're writing down.
One of them had to be read separately.
Yeah, they do need to be read separately. We don't, we don't have to read the entire resolution because it's printed in the packet, but we need to do.
Let me start all about the motion.
Sorry.
That's good. Number one.
With answering a question.
Yes. I'll accept the motion to approve the resolution setting the millage rate as presented.
I move to approve the resolution setting the millage rate as presented.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution setting the millage rate as presented. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
This one's all how.
Oh, that's right. Go, go.
Allison McAdam, Houston?
Yes.
Anne Zibou?
Yes.
Mary Ann Tomrey?
Yes.
Angela Shaw?
Yes.
Number two, I will accept the motion to approve the resolution establishing the district library budget as presented.
I move to approve the resolution establishing the Parkston Independence District Library twenty twenty-three budget as presented.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Parkston Independence District Library budget as presented. Please call the board.
Allison McAdam, Houston?
Yes.
Anne Zibou?
Yes.
Mary Ann Tomrey?
Yes.
Angela Shaw?
Yes.
Finally, I will accept the motion to approve the updated wage ranges and the wage schedule for twenty twenty-three as presented.
I move to approve the updated wage ranges and two thousand twenty-three wage schedule as presented.
I'll say.
Been moved and seconded that we do this. It's a tongue twister.
Yes. I read slowly.
Approve the updated wage ranges and the twenty twenty-three wage schedule.
Now I can be straight up.
As presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passed? Motion is approved.
Agreed, Jim.
I'd like to commend, I'd like to commend everybody, all the board, and our director for making the process of looking at this for hours go smoothly on our reading day. Thank you.
Agreed, Jim.
Number two, approval of budget adjustment to execute fire suppression upgrade.
It's not me if we don't talk about fire suppression still, right? All right, so during the library annual fire inspection, the fire inspector expressed concern about the lack of a sprinkler head in the trap space above the cabinets in the meeting room. Right there. He let us know that he wanted to investigate further as to whether an additional sprinkler should be added to this area. In late July, he alerted us that he feels this change is needed and gave us until October twenty twenty-two to present a corrective plan to him. We contacted our fire suppression contractor, Absolute Fire, and provided the included quote and to the fire, to the fire inspector in August. He has approved this proposal and requested that we try to have the work done by the end of the year or as soon thereafter as the contractor contains the needed parts and execute the work. The contractor is able to order the parts and do the work well before the end of the year, but we did not budget for this unexpected repair. Funds for this unexpected repair will need to come from fund balance, but we even made a tie for this purpose for these random positions. So what you have is a quote for two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars from Absolute Fire to add two sprinkler heads into the drywall ceiling above the closet area in the meeting room, and it would be within, based on light hazard occupancy, semi-recessed. And this meets with the fire inspector's approval, which is his plan. He said, a okay to this.
Okay. Comments? What, that's not a very large
That's not a very large space.
Well, it goes up. So if you, I don't know if you, if you remember, it, that soffit comes down and the ceiling actually goes all the way up as high as the rest of the room.
That's where it would be.
So here's, here's, there were two different possibilities to solve this problem. We could either put the sprinkler heads up there or we could cut out the soffit. I didn't really want to cut out the soffit because when you cut out the soffit, there's a big open storage space which means people are going to stall stuff up there. Part of the reason we put it up is supposed to prevent that from being messaged. Um, so, um, unfortunately, and to be perfectly honest, the fire inspector did not really want to take that thought out necessarily, he's like, just putting in sprinklers just to ensure that, um, it's not that. So one of the things we did do, there used to be lighting up in there. We did take out the lighting. We did take out the electrical that's out there, which is why he's saying light hazard duty sprinklers up there. But the fact, even if we took the soffit out, um, he was saying that we probably would still have to add sprinklers because that sprinkler over there is not close enough necessarily to cover that space. But he said we would probably, even if we took the soffit out, we, we might be able to get away with creating ones for the rooftop. But then we would also be getting junk up there which is not going to want us to do and that might be a battle in another thought, so.
So this has been thoroughly discussed with that.
All my goodness.
It's been viewed by all of us several times. But we are very blessed to have an amazing fire department here in township. We have a fantastic fire inspector and fire marshal who worked with me on a regular basis to ensure that our building is safe and unencumbered. Um, and whenever they come in and say, "You need to do this," I say, "Yes, sir," and we do it. So, um, but in return, they have also been very kind and very patient in terms of understanding that, especially with this case, you know, he could have said, "I need this done in six weeks," but he also understands that the contractors are having trouble getting parts. They may not have enough staff to take over that amount of time, he gets, and he's not, because we follow what he says so carefully, he's not concerned to be there with danger, but he said for long-term it was aid and I think it's to be died, but he didn't, but he's not panicked and saying, "Oh, my gosh, the building's completely unsafe because it's just a brick up in there."
And on that note, I will accept the motion.
I make a motion that we accept the proposal from Absolute Fire to, um, fund balance to complete the repair of the sprinkler, sprinklers.
You would add the volume to their.
Oh, yeah, I know, I'm sorry. And adding on of two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars, uh, I'm sorry.
Two thousand four hundred and seventy, uh, dollars. Um, funding.
Tonight, that's a, um,
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been approved and seconded, presented and seconded, that we approve a budget adjustment of two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars from fund balance to nine hundred and thirty-one dollars to execute this proposal from Absolute Fire to add fire sprinklers as presented. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Back to H V A C.
Okay, so, um, in two thousand and six, all five of the library's H V A C units were replaced. As discussed in our review of the capital improvement plan, these units have a life expectancy of fifty, twenty years. It has been brought to our attention that H V A C unit number three, which is the largest of the five units, is in need of a new compressor and the entire unit will likely need to be replaced soon. This unit, because of the size and the load it carries, gives us the most trouble and is required more maintenance and repair than the others in recent years. It is very difficult for the other four units to adequately heat the building if number three breaks down. It's essentially impossible to keep the building after an appropriate temperature if number three breaks down. Um, currently timed to order a unit of this size is currently sixteen weeks. We've also been told that the cost of this type of unit is going up thirty to fifty percent and the lead time will be twenty-six to twenty-eight weeks. After further discussion with our contractor, we decided replacing this unit at this time is the prudent thing to do. Whether we, whether we replace the compressor or the entire unit, we will need to bring in a cranium to do the work because it is up on the roof and the stairwell is not large enough to accommodate the compressor being driven upstairs. If this unit were to go out in the dead of winter when the other units can't carry the load faced with a lead time of six to seven months to a canor replacement, could be a very difficult situation for us. So, um, given the fact that we do have the ability financially to do it at this time, we feel is a prudent thing to do. Okay, any questions about that? I did include a map of the units so that you can see what it covers. So essentially, this unit does cover the entire adult seating area, um, and all of the, uh, like the main hallway and, um, business center. It's the, the, probably, oh, I would say about a third of the building.
Drawings very helpful.
Yeah. I thought that might be. Yeah.
Did you notice on that R P. how systematic said the, the date of that letter, it was September sixth, that they said we'd have to order that before September eighth?
Yes, we have, we have it, um, they're ordering for us.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, we're.
Some of that was like.
No, no, we're, we, okay.
Fifty percent on top of that, it's like, whoa, it's eighteen thousand.
Yep.
Your four hundred, accept the motion.
I move that we, um, approve the replacement of H V A C number three as presented with the budget just, just thirty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars from fund balance to nine hundred and seventy-five for this project.
Your second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the replacement of H V A C number three as presented and approve a budget adjustment of thirty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars from fund balance to nine, nine seventy-five for this project. Need comments or questions? In that case, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Now, do you want to go with sixteen? How long do you?
Sixteen weeks.
Oh, sixteen.
It will take sixteen. If we, if we had not done it at one rate of itself.
It would have been?
It would have been twenty-six, twenty-eight.
Okay, so.
So, and it could go up in price thirty percent.
Yeah.
So they knew that we were, that we were doing this at the meeting tonight and so they were able to, to hold on to it for us, so. That's still the end of the year. It's going to be in the new year. Well, we have to put the deposit down on it as well, so. I've been having to budget it all with the money for this year. Um, it's not a little fingers crossed, hopefully maybe we get our unit to come before the end of the year. I didn't want to, I was worried that it came before the end of the year and they wanted to put it up there in December and we hadn't.
Approved it.
Approved it, um, that we would run into trouble because you have to make your final budget adjustments with that December board meeting. And I was worried that if something happened, I didn't want to have to say, "No, no, hold our unit until January because we can't afford to pay for the rest of it." So I moved the money, fingers crossed it'll come in. If it doesn't, then we'll make a bunch of adjustments in January to move that money to transfer in twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. I'm, I'm going to pass another finger. It wasn't worth the roll of the dice of having ready, but it did come in before the end of the year, so.
Absolutely.
I don't need the auditor dating us because we didn't have our, have the money to do it.
Okay, before our final item tonight, something we've not done for a couple of years, library director and the library board evaluations.
So the timing for all of the library's annual performance reviews takes place from September through December. This includes a process of evaluating the library director and a self-review by the library board. At this time, the library board should call the performance review subcommittee to set a timeline to complete these. So I have included in your packet, um, both the description of how the library director's performance review is done. It's a little bit of a complicated process, but it is definitely, um, a doable thing. And then the other one is the library board's self-evaluation, um, which is actually, um, pretty, pretty streamlined, um, the air conform that's left a lot and then we, I have a spreadsheet that helps with, uh, and you can look at it through your, um, where you're trying to sell or maybe where some work can be.
So we indebted this wheel several years ago. And the first item would be to talk about who should be on our committee. You noticed that the board president is on the committee. I would like some assistance, so one or two board members who would be willing to work on that with me.
Yes, I would, I would help.
Okay, there's Chris volunteers?
I would help if it's after October eleventh.
I don't see any problem with that. I have the application today.
Officer, date this has to be in by end of the year?
Before the end of the year. Yeah, we just, we just set a window while we.
So that's Marilyn, Nancy and Chris.
So, poor Marilyn, you've got two newbies.
The good thing is, is that we spent a lot of time on this when we first became an independent library because we felt evaluation and discussion with everyone was important in the library. So the department heads discuss roles and issues in the library with their department people, and it is the board's responsibility to evaluate the director and ourselves, to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make this board responsive to the community. And so we will discuss after the meeting, a date for us to get together, and we will review our packet, our plan.
There's a fair amount of gathering of information that needs to happen, so, um, on the library director's performance review plan, that we could probably go ahead and get started and, and.
That would be fine.
Yeah, and then if you don't want to meet until after October, then it's going to be field two. Because there's, there's, um, a form that a staff can fill out, so we could go ahead and go with that prior to October.
Get back October.
You haven't. Okay, so anytime thereafter.
I'll get back.
Very well, that's fine.
Okay, so.
Well, if you don't want to start from October, that's fine too, but there is gathering that needs to be done. We could be running, we can have those forms to the staff members which you want to fill them out and gather them and deal with them after.
So what you're saying is that we, maybe we should move forward from understanding without them.
We gather the date.
The date, that's all.
Before the date.
So, so are you asking for a date for us to start this or?
No, I'm just, I'm throwing out some options of how it's done and just if, if you look at the way that this is done. If you start in October, handing out those forms to get, the first piece is you, you gather data from the staff, so I don't know how long you want to give them to fill out those forms.
If they would get started on that so that.
By October.
Mid-October.
Yes, they'd be ready for you.
Right. So that can be completed by October fifteenth. That sounds agreeable.
Yeah, yes, that's perfect.
So if we can get that to our staff members.
Right.
That would be.
You and I can figure out how it is.
Okay, so if that's, if it's acceptable to the board, Julie and I will work out a schedule for delivering these materials and collecting them, and we can do our self-evaluation discussion later.
That's good. So just to clarify, when I say that I'm going to help Marilyn, what I will do is I will make the copies and give her the forms and she will give them to the staff members and then everything that goes, as it's collected, all goes to her. I don't see any of that in the real idea, but I will make sure that the copies are made on those things. This is very, so that that's not a very great office.
Right. So all of this is privately.
Yes.
Excessed.
Excessed.
And I'm so pleased that we worked on that before COVID, years ago, and we have been through this process before.
A couple of times.
Yes, so we try to do, when we finish it, we tweet it, follow expression online. So if that's acceptable to everyone, we'll ask our board to pass.
Great.
And in that case, I will accept the motion for adjournment.
Someone?
Second?
I'll second.
The movement seconded that we adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried, now listening. Thank you all.